Good morning. I'd like to welcome each of you to our Board of Commissioners' meeting this morning for December the 2nd, 2013. We appreciate you being in attendance. We would like to also welcome those who are viewing us by way of television. We shall now call the meeting to order and have our roll call. And I know that Mr. Hammond is on his way, and I assume Dr. Johnson is on his way also. We shall now have our invitation and pledge. Let's stand. Our Commissioner McGlyhorn will do the pledge, and I will do the prayer. Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity of gathering together this morning as a community and conduct the business of our county. We thank you for our county and for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us each and every day. We pray now that you might be with us in this meeting this morning, help us to do those things that would glorify you and that would best represent the citizens that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Face the flag, please.
Pledge and introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is the election of our Chair and Vice Chair for 2014, and I will now turn the meeting over to our attorney to handle that piece of our business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to Rule Section 5 of your Rules of Procedure, any Commissioner may nominate any other Commissioner for Chairman, or may nominate the current Chairman or Vice Chairman for a second term. Nominations do not require a second, and it is not necessary to open or close nominations by motion. Once all Commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, with the last nominee being voted on first, we'll continue in reverse order until those positions are filled. With that, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair.
Madam Attorney, I'd like to nominate Mark Owens.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. With our... You may vote, and Mr. -- Dr. Johnson may vote by hand until we get the computer straight. Hearing none. If you'll go ahead and vote. And we have Dr. Johnson's vote by hand. And with that, then, congratulations to Chairman Owens, and we will move to the position of Vice Chair. I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Glenn Webb.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. We will go ahead and vote. And congratulations to Glenn Webb on the position of Vice Chair. That concludes your election of officers.
So now we need to take about three minutes and get our seats rearranged. So we'll take a five-minute break.
Good morning. It is my pleasure to thank Mr. Jimmy Garrus for the leadership that he's given us over the past year as Chairman, in addition to all the things he does for this Board, in addition to Jimmy. And personally, and on behalf of the Board, I want to thank you. Next, I want to thank this Board, the members of this Board, for the honor that you bestowed upon me by electing me Chairman. It is my pleasure to do so, and I want to solicit from each of you support throughout the year in manners in which I may expedite and the manners which I may contribute to the government of this county, and that comes purely and solely from the members of this Board. Thirdly, I want to thank the County Manager, his staff, and employees of Pitt County for the good job that they have done during 2013. It's been an excellent year. We've made a lot of strides forward. Second to that remark, I want to challenge each of us for the year of 2014. I had an old motto I used to use about work hard and make more and spend less. That certainly is something to take as a model, to model ourselves after. Having said that, the next order of business is approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Next order of business is public hearing. Ms. Kaden?
She's not...
She stepped out for a moment.
All right. How about...
Dr. Johnson wants to vote.
Come on, Juan.
This is in reference to an economic development project. The county is looking at an economic development grant and the amount of 75% net increase in ad valorem taxes for a period of five years. Note, that is net increase, not the existing tax base. $114,000 match for a 110C grant. That is over a three-year period. That is based on the actual creation and investment involved with this project. I remind you that all of our incentives are performance-based. Nothing is before the fact, only after the deliverance of investment and jobs. Additional training dollars, if needed, up to $10,000. We are not expecting to need that, based on the contribution by the community college system, but we want to be prepared there. And also, support of the town of Farmville as they pursue a CBBG grant on behalf of this project.
Anything else?
That's it.
If not, I declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone that decides to speak pro or con on this?
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Wanda, you said it was a CBDG grant?
Yes.
Do they realize what they're getting in for?
Yes, they are...
I'm talking about with the fact that they have got to keep their books 100% open to the federal government for a period of, like, it's either seven or 10 years?
Yes.
They're fully aware of what they're getting in for?
Right. The town of Farmville contracts with McDavid and Associates, and McDavid in turn has briefed the company fully.
Well, all I can say is, as a company that I manage, we looked at that, wouldn't touch it with us. Fifty-foot pole. Okay. As long as they've read all the documents. I hope they have.
Ms. Gallagher, is there anything that you know of that I have not included?
No, I think you've appropriately summarized the package. The company is aware of each of these incentives that are being offered and have been provided, all of the information to fully research them further.
And Beth?
I'd like to make a motion...
Wait, we're not here.
Excuse me. Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we have any others that desire to speak on behalf of... against this? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. And now, Ms. Ward?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations offered, these applications.
I will second that. And let me also say that I serve on the Development Commission Board. We are very excited about this project. I think that it has great potential for our community.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote.
How do you want to handle Eugene?
If you can mark him as an abstain, and his vote will count with the majority.
Mr. James asked to be excused. I think he had a prior... a meeting to... appointment, and he'll be back shortly, but...
Where does the abstain...
The seal.
The seal.
Does that take care of it?
That does. Thank you.
All right. Now, the first public hearing, is that present? Come in, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
You're fine.
All right. It is that time of year again for the Community Transportation Program Grant, and as part of the grant, we have to hold a public hearing to allow the public to comment. This year, for administrative funding, we are seeking $174,980, which requires a 15% match of $26,247, and we're also asking this year for capital funding in the form of replacement vehicles for the transit fleet of $171,300, which requires a 10% match of $17,130. The total grant funding for the fiscal year of 2015 will be $346,280, with a total match of $43,377. This is an annual application process to receive these grant funds, and I would respectfully ask that the Chairman would open the public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open. Are there any pros or cons or additions at this time? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion for this?
Motion to approve. Ms. Sagan?
Wait, hold one minute, Mr. Malone. I think I'm supposed to do this. During the public hearing, the public should be explicitly asked if they wish to comment on the proposal of funding, and the minutes from the public hearing must reflect that the public hearing was asked to offer comments. Now, Mr. Malone...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, let's vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Elliott, are you next?
Yes, sir. Next, we have a presentation, two resolutions.
No, no, I'm sorry. Got the public address to the Board. I skipped that. Anyone desire... Has anyone signed that?
No, sir.
Anyone present now that would like to make the public address to the Board? If so, come forward. All right, now, Mr. Elliott.
We'd like to do the presentations to the Chairman, Vice Chairman...
Oh, yeah? I skipped too much, didn't I? All right, we've got two resolutions. Do we have a motion for approval of that?
I move for approval.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hammond needs to vote on the last pub... on the last public hearing as well.
Dave, you got you.
Very good. Now you're ready to vote again.
All right. We ready to vote on, Dave?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ready, let's vote. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask you and Mr. Garrus, Commissioner Garrus, will you come down front? The Board has prepared two resolutions, one for former Chairman Garrus and for former Chairman... Vice Chairman, Mr. Owens, who's now Chairman. And if you'd like, I'll read.
Read.
Read the first one for former Chairman Garrus. Resolution of appreciation honoring Jimmy Garrus. Whereas Jimmy Garrus has served faithfully and honorably as a Chairman, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2012 to December 2013. And whereas Chairman Garrus has served the citizens of Pitt County since 2002 as a County Commissioner. And whereas Jimmy Garrus has served and provided the Board of County Commissioners with steadfast leadership and guidance during his tenure as Chairman. Whereas the citizens of Pitt County appreciate the extensive amount of time and dedication exhibited by Jimmy Garrus as Chairman of the Board. Whereas Chairman Garrus, as an active Development Commission member, was involved in economic development announcements of projects such as Dry Daddy and Project Speed-- and these are code names, obviously. And also, Pitt County is recognized with the distinction of being a certified work-ready county. And whereas, under Chairman Garrus's leadership, the Board approved a new assessment policy for existing subdivision street improvements, as well as a policy for the continued maintenance of newly developed streets and subdivisions. And whereas, the Board approved Pitt Community College and moving forward with a $19.9 million general obligation bond referendum that was successfully passed by the voters of Pitt County. And whereas, Chairman Garrus was an ardent proponent of the county continuing to build its fund balance, in which was accomplished by adding $1,500,000 to a percentage total of 15.26%. Now therefore be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby commend Jimmy Garrus for providing determined leadership and diligent service to the Board and to the citizens of Pitt County during his tenure as Chairman. Adopted the second day of December 2013, signed by current Chairman Mark W. Owens and attested by Kimberly W. Hines.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Let me just say it's been an honor serving as the Chairman. It has been a pleasure. This is a great group to work with, and one of my highest honors since I've been a County Commissioner is for my peers, my Board of Commissioners, to ask me to serve as their Chairman, and I appreciate that very much. We have a great county, great opportunities here. This announcement that we just made is a great opportunity for our community, and we all will continue to work to see that we get more opportunities like that. I leave this position of Chairman in extremely competent hands.
With that being said, we now have resolution of appreciation...
Wait a minute, Jimmy.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Resolution of appreciation honoring Mark W. Owens, Jr. Whereas Mark W. Owens, Jr. has led the Pitt County Board of Commissioners as Vice Chairman from December 2012 to December 2013 with dignity and perseverance. Whereas Mark Owens has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County since 1992 as a County Commissioner. Whereas Mark Owens is an attentive listener with an acute ability to identify the issues at hand and craft solutions in the best interest of the public. Whereas Mark Owens has provided the Board of County Commissioners with dedication and commitment when called upon during his tenure as Vice Chairman. Whereas Mark Owens has provided strong and unwavering support for education, health care, public safety, and economic development. And whereas Mark Owens has been a strong partner with the members of the local delegations within the North Carolina General Assembly and United States Congress. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners expresses their appreciation to Mark Owens for his ability to hone in on an issue and address items with tact and logic. And whereas, Mark Owens has, through his attentiveness and devotion, exhibited concern for the overall improvement of the quality of life for the citizens of Pitt County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby commend Mark Owens for his providing stalwart and able leadership and diligent service to the Board and to the citizens of Pitt County during his tenure as Vice Chairman for the year 2013. Adopted the second day of December 2013, signed by former Chairman Jimmy Garrus and attested by Clerk Kimberly Hines.
Thank you. All right. Maybe we'll get it lined up here now. Public address to the Boards?
Nobody's signed that.
No one? All right, no one present wants to talk? And now, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items for Manager's report. First item is your next meeting dates. In this month, we have the second meeting being on December 16th at 6:00 PM. Your meetings for the new year will be determined by the adoption of your calendar, which is later on the agenda. In terms of boards the county is currently advertising for, recruiting for, Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team, the Greenville Board of Adjustment, Aiden Planning Board, the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, and the Pitt County Development Commission. Item C, wanted to bring to your attention, the Pitt County Development Commission has taken action regarding a presentation by the North Carolina Eastern Region, which is in the process of trying to transition into the North Carolina East Alliance. And that item, in terms of their action, at this point, they have opted and made a recommendation not to take formal action on this. The actual action they did take was adopted in this motion that says, "The consensus of the Pitt County Development Commission Board concerning a letter of intent or commitment to join the NC East Alliance was to make no recommendation or decision about membership at this time, because neither the scope of work of the new organization nor the state's plans regarding economic development services are known." That being the case, we were planning having Mr. Chafee come to your next Board meeting to make a presentation based upon the recommendation of the Development Commission. At this point, that's premature. We'll wait until these actions, in terms of finding out what the state's going to do, and finding out more what the scope of work of this new NC East Alliance will be, before we bring him in and ask you to make a formal decision, unless I hear otherwise from the Board. Item D, the Department of Social Services, their readiness program update. That is not ready to come before you yet. I do know the DSS Board will be meeting next week. We'll be discussing that, and I'll bring that back to you at a future date. On item E, again, another item dealing with DSS in terms of the recruitment of their new director. Once Mr. Perry retires at the end of January, the Board did hold a called meeting week before last to discuss several matters, but one of them was to discuss the recruitment process in terms of advertising, coming up with a... an ad and a job description and so forth for the position. They did review a draft ad and process. That's going to go before the DSS Board a week from tomorrow, to be formally approved, and their intent is to get applications in in the month of January and to try to move the process as long as... as quick as they can to replace his position. The second part of that, where I've got consolidation as a follow-up to the last meeting, the last couple of meetings, in terms of human service consolidation. At this point in time, no immediate... no immediate action has been taken in terms of moving along additional steps. I guess unless I hear from the Board otherwise, that'll just kind of rest where it is in terms of no immediate action. On item F, with the Golden Leaf update, the last couple of meetings I have been giving you updates regarding our success in that process. As you're aware, we did have two projects that moved on, that we had submitted to Golden Leaf, the collaboration of the educational systems for a STEM or STEAM type of initiative. STEM being your science, technology, engineering, and math, and then your STEAM element being the A and the STEM being arts and design. That is continuing to move forward, and actually, there is a letter of intent is due today, being December 2nd, back to Golden Leaf on that project. On the other project, dealing with the Bernstein Clinic, the hospital has decided to withdraw moving forward on that project. Their feeling is that it's premature at this point, based upon the resources they say that they have in terms of, I guess, actually, the email that went forward says, "Thank you for supporting Pitt County residents through the community-based grants process. The needs of our county far exceed the resources available, yet we consider ourselves fortunate compared to many counties in East." Says, "We appreciate you inviting Biden Health to participate in the grant process. However, our project is premature and not ready for submission at this time." So they're basically withdrawing. One thing we have asked, inquired of Golden Leaf is, A, could we pull on another project that we had on the list that was not submitted initially? And they said, no, that the... that the process was you had to have it in by the deadline. And then we've asked further, could we take the half a million dollars that was going to be targeted to the Bernstein Clinic and add it back to the STEAM/STEM collaboration? And they said, as long as we can prove need and purpose and justify, they would consider it. So I just want to give you that update on that project. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the Manager by the Board? If not, then our next order of business is our Superintendent of Schools of Pitt County, Dr. Linker, would you like to come forward?
I don't believe he's here yet. We can have staff maybe call up.
All right, let's move on to consent item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Items for decision, the calendar of the meeting, do we want to... motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, there's a couple things, if I could, to note about that. The Clerk set out a revised budget calendar, and Ms. Hines, can you tell us what the change on the budget calendar is?
That's the leaf that you have on here?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hammond still needs to vote on the last matter.
Dave, you need to vote, please, on the last item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The document in your packet was revised, and the new document is set out before you, and the changes were, the February 6th date has been changed to February 3rd, the April 14th through the 18th was changed to April 14th to the 17th. The 18th is the holiday, Good Friday. The May 5th date for the present overview has been changed to May the 6th, and the June 10th public hearing date has been changed to June the 3rd.
Any questions? Any further directions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I can also point out on the regular calendar, no changes, but just wanted to point out just for your reference, in terms of the meeting on following Easter, which would be on April 21st. In some years in the past, we have canceled that meeting, doing it due to it being Easter weekend, and we look back the past 10 years, I think we had maybe two instances where it was canceled. We could monitor that, and if you desire, when we get closer to that date, we'll... we can make that recommendation at that point.
All right, good. Any other comments?
Motion to approve.
I second it.
All right, let's vote. All right, John?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Back in... in May, Richard, May 20th, 2013 meeting, I brought this before you and was planning on spending the money back in that fiscal year, but being at the end, I just could not pull it off. We still were able to secure the grant money, but this grant money we will receive is $68,003.06 from the White Goods Grant. These are monies that are generated through the tax when you go and purchase a washing machine or a dryer. We applied for it. What we plan to use it for is a new tractor, truck, and trailer. We'll be able to do a lot of things with it. We can haul our metals ourselves, make more money. We can haul mulch in our shingles. The trailer gives us more volume. We can haul more across the road. There is a $55,000 match that is budgeted in my budget this year, and I'm asking for approval. This is a budget amendment to allow this to happen.
If there's no question, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept this budget amendment.
Second.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, James?
Good morning. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Two items concerning our buyout program this morning. The first is a lease... our lease program. You may recall, we have a program that set up her policy that allows the county to lease our buyout properties that were acquired following Hurricane Floyd. We've got about 100 properties, almost 300 acres, and routinely, now, we've been in this for well over 10 years. Some of these 10-year leases are coming due again, and a lot of uses are allowed for these properties. And if people are interested that are viewing this morning, certainly they can contact our office for consideration of some of these properties. Typically, they remain in open space. So what we have before you this morning are 11 properties. They've all been advertised and published in the paper, and we're ready to re-lease those for another 10-year stint. That's what we have this morning, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no question, do we have a motion for that?
I say move.
I believe there's two forms of that. One is to adopt the resolution, and also... One is to adopt the resolution and also to authorize the manager. Is that the motion, Ms. Dooley?
Yes, to include both of those.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Not, let's vote. Thank you, James.
And also, a second item concerning one buyout property, which is located on Grimeson Bridge Road, on the northern leg of that particular road. You may recall, we had an easement agreement that was requested by Piedmont Natural Gas similar to this about six months or so ago. This particular one is in response to a new bridge project that's located just north of the existing high-rise bridge on Grimeson Bridge Road. There's an overflow bridge that's being replaced, and the gas line needs to be relocated. This would impact one of the properties along the north section of Grimeson Bridge Road, and that's highlighted here on the map. And the exact location on this particular property, there are two different easements that are requested. One is a permanent easement, that's shown here in the salmon color, and that will stay on the property for the duration. The other part is more of a staging area, and that's about three tenths of an acre on this property, and that's just a temporary easement. All said, what's being allocated for this project is $1,500 from Piedmont Natural Gas, and what we're requesting, staff is requesting that these funds be designated to allow us to maintain some of these other buyout properties. We've got some that need to be cabled off, some that need to be posted, and we're asking for the budget amendment to go along with that. So three actions on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve all three actions.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, let's vote. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Dr. Lenker?
This is superintendent of our Pitt County Public Schools, Dr. Lenker. He makes a report to the commissioners periodically, and we're glad to have you today.
Thank you, glad to be here today. Got a lot of great things going on, you know, we're obviously focusing on graduation and graduation rates and those sort of things, which I'm sure you've seen that over the last four years, the graduation rates have come up probably 25 or so percent here in Pitt County, and we're doing what we can to keep that, that trend continuing. Some other big things, I know that are interested members of the county board are the middle school math books. We've got some middle school math books out there. We're also getting ready to hit the high school math textbooks and get those kids ready for the next five or so years, at least that long, until we can make our transition into technology with our use of our Chromebooks or iPads. So hopefully, by that point, all of our textbooks and things will be either online or on a computer. So those are just two of the main things we're looking at. Would like to thank Mr. Garris and Mr. Webb for going out to South Central. Hope you had a good day. I know I had a great day out there, learning and watching the teachers in action and what they were doing in, I was in a physics classroom, and just amazing the way they were interacting with the students. There's good stuff going on. Of course, I went to an English classroom, and I think I was probably the dumbest one in the room, so, but, those kids are doing a great job, and teachers doing a fantastic job, so. Do you have some questions? I brought my team with me for some specific things. This is my first time, I'm not sure exactly what we're, what we're after here.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Good, talk about, you did see some test scores that came out recently, if you keep that in mind. That's a brand-new set of objectives, a brand-new curriculum, that which basically is just a benchmark. You saw numbers that were much lower than they've ever been, and that doesn't mean a whole lot, that most of it's just a matter of where we're going to start and how we're going to move forward. That's what those numbers represent. Certainly doesn't mean that our schools are going worse than they were. They're obviously doing much better than they ever have been.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
All right, Dr. Johnson, then Tom, then Beth.
I have a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move that we accept with appreciation the report of superintendent of public schools.
All right, do we have a second for that? It's a little out of order, Tom, but...
Yeah, I don't think we accept the...
We normally don't do that, but if you want to do it, that's fine. Somebody's second of his motion.
I'll second it.
All right, let's vote. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Tom?
Dr. Lenker, one of the big concerns I have with the school system is, and my daughter teaches, she teaches biology and chemistry, got her master's in biology, and she's in another county, but it gives me a little bit of more of a firsthand appreciation for what teachers and stuff go through. The classes that she teaches, they're all the kids who are going to college or headed that way. And what I see locally is that we keep spending more and more money on kids that are supposedly going to college. Vocational education seems to be less and less every year. Not all kids are geared to go to college, and I know that there are some actions with the community college to help with some of the vocational, but I personally would like to see the school system actually take a closer look at doing more for vocational education, not less, because I would say that probably 50% or more of the kids are not geared to go to college. They don't want to go to college. Learning a useful trade would be, or setting them up to be able to go into the community college where they could even go further into the trades, would be good. Electricians, auto mechanics, these are good income jobs, and I don't think we do nearly enough as far as vocational.
Well, we are expanding our career technical education programs, and one of, and right now, we're actually, you know, this board approved Golden Leaf grant opportunity for East Carolina, Pitt Community College, and the Pitt County Schools to work on what's called, what we're putting together as an advanced manufacturing grant, which will actually enhance our CTE programs and give more kids opportunities. You're exactly right. If 50% of the kids are going to college, then, then that's probably, I agree, that's probably not correct, probably less than that.
Right.
That are going to a four-year college, for sure. And we need to take advantage of Pitt Community College here and our, of course, our relationship with East Carolina, but take advantage of Pitt Community College and get our kids over there.
So how many kids would be served by the programs that you were just outlining?
It would just, that advanced manufacturing would be offered at all of our high schools. It would get, you know, another, another career track for kids, but also, the idea would be to get kids into the workplace before they're out of school, very similar to our, our Health Science Academy, which has been very successful. We're going to model it after that program, but get, but instead of working at Biden, the kids will then be going to businesses in the community. I know Wanda here is working, working on that. That, that's going to be a good program. I think we're going after a million and a half dollars or so, so that'll get the program started. And I agree with you completely, that CTE is, if you look at what the state has done over the last several years with the college career ready, as opposed to the focus we had five or so years ago, the focus is on career.
Right.
And that, that is actually increasing.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, Beth.
I want to thank you also, Dr. Lenker, for coming today, and we started this opportunity for our superintendent and also for the president of our community college to come four times a year, and I don't, I think the community college is two or three, I'm not sure, but anyway, because generally, we saw you all at budget time, and we tried to get a year's worth of whatever, and it's an opportunity for you, as the superintendent, to just report things that have been going on in the last, you know, quarter. So we appreciate you coming and look forward to hearing your other reports. Thank you.
Any other questions of, Mr. Garris?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like my comment. Let me say, I did enjoy being out at South Central a week before last. I was very impressed with the teacher, Mrs. Piner. She had an excellent knowledge of her subject, which was history. I learned a lot.
She's a very sharp lady.
Had my mind refreshed on a lot of things that I had forgotten. I was also impressed with the interaction she had with her students, and also, I sensed a great deal of respect that her students had for her, and I was very impressed with that. She did a very good job.
She's very energetic and laid, does a, does a great job in the classroom.
Good.
So.
Is that it, Mr. Garris?
That's it.
Mr. McLaure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm just concerned about the type of retention rate that we have for our teachers, you know, that we hear across the state, that a lot of teachers are leaving and because of certain factors. What are we doing in terms of maintaining our teachers, and especially those qualified ones?
I know with the help of, of the county commissioners, we were able to increase our supplement, put it back in place this past year. That certainly is helping. You know, the biggest thing we're trying to do is, is we've got to make it just the best workplace, because, you know, right now, it's, when you come down from the General Assembly, it's not always positive about what's going on in public education. So we're going to promote public education, whether that's the community, county commissioners, the Board of Education, my staff, let them know how valuable they are. You know, part of, part of it is just let them know what they do and how valuable they are to Pitt County schools, and Pitt County as a whole. You know, they pay, most of the teachers live here. They pay taxes here, you know, they buy their groceries here, they go to the stores here. I mean, that adds a lot to Pitt County. You've got a couple thousand teachers who do that every day. But bottom line is, we have to get out and hit with the people that are making the differences in Raleigh and talk to them about what we're doing with teachers. How are we making the teachers' life better? What are we going to do to teacher salaries? I mean, that's, that's a big thing. And so those are the things that I'm working on, that I try to deal with. And of course, with the help of the county commissioners, we're able to do, hopefully, keep our 5% supplement. We'd love to see that go up a percentage point or two, obviously. I know in other places, that percentage is, you know, 6, 7, 8, 10%. So it's something we probably need to talk about as we go forward.
Anything else, Mr. McLaure? Ms. Ward?
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. McLaure, and I had a note down here, and I didn't look over. The retention of our teachers is very important. The retention of our beginning teachers and the nurturing of our beginning teachers, I think, is the most important job that the leadership in each individual local school has. Those teachers that come in there as beginning teachers, if they have hired them because they met the qualifications and they had the credentials, they need a lot of attention that first, second, and third year before they are licensed in the state of North Carolina. And I taught over at the university, future teachers in elementary ed for 12 years. I'm a retired principal and a retired teacher, and I think whenever you hire a beginning teacher, you as a principal take on that responsibility. And I would hope that we are looking, as a county, at additional training and help in the leadership skills for our principals that it takes to do that job, because we have a lot of beginning teachers that leave after one year, two years, and then some of them are not renewed on their third year, and they've had no indication that there was a problem. So I think it's easier to not do that, because beginning teachers are sitting on thin ice anyway, because they have to get through that third year before they can get licensed. So I would really like to see the board and the leadership in the schools focus on that. Thank you.
My personal belief is, it's, it's a whole lot easier to make teachers better and to work with them and get them better and keep them than it is to try to find replacement teachers.
You're right.
So, and that's the same way with, with principals and everybody else. If you can take what you've got, the quality of people you have, and we obviously have great quality of people here in Pitt County, take those people and just work, like you said, give them the nurturing aspect, give them the resources they need to grow, and then from that point, you can turn them into good quality teachers or principals.
Thank you.
I agree completely.
Thank you, Dr. Lenker. We'll get to your staff later on, so...
Okay.
Appreciate you coming, the presentation, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Massing?
Chair Owens, commissioners, it's a pleasure to talk with you again, especially at this point. I am, you see on the agenda, the item related to the bond referendum, and I, first, I want to thank you for your confidence in the community college and in your endorsement of this decision to move forward in a referendum item to the, to the voters. Certainly, I'm pleased with the, the turnout that we had in the election. The voter participation was much higher than what it had been in previous municipal elections. Pitt Community College made a major effort in the campaign, and we are very pleased that we have generous supporters in the community who enabled us to do that, as well as a strong PCC Foundation. That campaign was a rallying point for the college, and I think that it once more illustrated the strong support that we have, not only in us as a college, but in what we represent, what we represent to the community and to Pitt County, and so we're thankful for that. Hearing Dr. Lenker talk, we have been involved already in many different cooperative discussions, and you'll see substantive developments in terms of career and technical education, most immediately at Aiden Griffin High School this, this coming spring term. Welding will be offered there for the first time ever. We've been offering it at North Pitt for, for many years, and we have discussions with Brad Johnston at Farmville Central to do more at that school, too. So I think there's initiatives already happening, and of course, Dr. Lenker mentioned the impressive Golden Leaf grant proposal that we have moving forward. So, one thing also that Commissioner Ward mentioned about new employees, we continue to make a major investment at PCC in supporting new people through a leadership institute that we developed in concert with East Carolina University, and they've been a great support for us. We are now, we've now completed our ninth year of that program. We've had over 300 of our faculty and staff participate in it. It's been a great success, and it's helped our retention of valuable employees. I will be talking with you in the days to come about developing a proposal for your assistance with some preliminary work that we have to do to prepare for this bond. You know that we have to develop very specific cost estimates before that can move forward, and I'll be discussing that with the county manager. And while I mention thanks, I want to also thank county manager Elliott and his entire staff, who worked so hard and faithfully with us along this process, and I know there's plenty of work ahead, but I bring this to you for your attention and for your consideration to move forward with the bond referendum, with the bond.
Do we have a motion to authorize the manager to sign this application?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county manager and deputy county manager to do this.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Now, the manager wants to make some remarks?
Yes, just wanted, on page 91 on the form that you're approving, just wanted to add a clarification on the top, if you pull up that form. We're being asked to sign, myself or the finance director, basically certification saying that the, the $18 million, which is the first project of two, the science building's $18 million, the remaining portion, $1.9 million, would be for the BLET facility, but the form says the $18 million are available for the planning and construction of this project. We'd just like the board's consent to clarify the form to say that they will be available upon issuance of general obligation bonds, because technically, they're not available. But obviously, you're approving this, will be a clear indication that this project is on a fast track going forward.
No further questions, ready to vote? Thank you, Dr. Mass.
Thank you.
All right, the...
They need to vote.
That it? Did you get it? Everybody vote?
Just need Mr. Hammond.
Dave?
I've voted.
Thank you. Is the reapportment to the adjustment, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Squartout and Mr. Skinner, and we appoint Mr. Leeball as the alternate.
Second?
All right, ready to vote? All right. Be no further business, Mr. Garris, you have any comments?
Great job, Mr. Chairman.
No comment, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
No comments.
Len?
Even with our extra activities today, I think you made another record, Chairman. Thank you.
No comment.
Dave? Well, I will take this for the next hour, then, but... No, I do want to thank each of you again for putting each of us where we are, and let's never lose sight of where we are, where we've been, and where we want to go. The lane of travel is wide open for all of us, and in regard to the chairman's appointments, I intend to make the same appointments that we had last year, unless I hear from you as board members requesting removal or placing, so let me hear from you if you want any change. board members requesting removal or placing, so let me hear from you if you want any change. If not, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.